We're gonna go ahead and call our commission meeting to order for May 26, 2016. We'd like to welcome each and every one of you to the Palacka City Commission Meeting. We will now have our invocation by Reverend Tommy Rogers, Pastor of Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor Rogers, will you also lead us in the pledge? Will everyone please stand?
Lord God, we thank you for yet another day, a day that has neither been earned nor deserved. However, by your grace, your love, your kindness, and your mercy, we are here today. And we thank you for this occasion to handle the business of this great city, to recognize those who are retiring, those who have received recognition above their peers, for those who have received advancement on the academic and athletic fields. In all things, we give you thanks. We pray right now, Master, that you will guide our minds, our hearts, direct our thoughts, so that we will be able to advance this city in the way that you would have us to go. We thank you for the blessings you have on us. We thank you for what you have already given us. And we are expecting in the good things you have in store for this great city that you have given us. We also pause, Master, on this weekend that we acknowledge those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for freedom as we prepare for our Memorial Day celebration. We do not forget those warriors, those men and women in uniform, that have given their lives for this country and also are still serving, protecting us every day. We want to say thank you. And we give you all the honor, the praise, and the glory, both now and eternally forever. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. Thank you, Pastor Rogers. Roll call, please. Here. Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the May 12th meeting for this year? There's motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one on the agenda, which is our public recognition section. We're not calling you yet. No, no, it gives us, it gives us great pleasure this time. Again, he jumps the gun. Firemen are always ready at any time. We're gonna ask, we're gonna ask Chief if you'd come forward with me right now and help me with this presentation. We're recognizing 34 years of service. I'm sure he could tell us how many minutes as well over the course of time. Over the last year or so, there's been kind of a going countdown. Ms. Lenity, would you come up and join us as well? There's been a going countdown with Chief, with Assistant Chief Lenity, as well as Ronnie Collier, on how many days they have left. What's your countdown right now?
Four days. Started out at 18:25 when I got in the drawing.
There we go. And so, what we wanna do right now is we wanna make sure we recognize Mark Lenity. I'm gonna let Chief go first, and then we'll do a presentation to him after that.
Yeah, Mark started with us in 1982, almost 34 years ago. Came through the ranks, firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, and he got the fire marshal job back in '04. Mark's been a great asset through his whole career as a firefighter, lieutenant, and fire marshal. Became Assistant Chief approximately a year ago. Mark's been instrumental in our prevention, fire prevention programs and the training of our employees. He started a golf tournament, or we call it a sparky golf tournament, about 10 years ago. We've raised over $100,000 for fire prevention over the last 10 years. He's been involved with the Lions Club as president and secretary. They got ducks for bucks. I mean, he's a real community person. Most of you probably recognize him, seen him out there. If you wanna know much about him, get on Facebook and follow him. It's quite a treat, quite a treat. But Mark's a fire inspector, fire marshal, arson investigator, and he does it all. And our department, being a small department, we rely on Mark a great deal, and he's gonna, he's irreplaceable. He's supported by his wife and two kids, wife, I think, 33 years. You know, close to the time he started with us. They're all family. That's one thing that Fire Department has, a brotherhood and a family. And Mark's been a big part of the family, a big part of getting us ISO 2. We were five, which is okay, and we're exceptional now, we're two. And he is a big part of that, a big part of it is the inspection program and the pre-plans and all that kinda stuff. And he led the charge on all that stuff. And we've come a long way with the help of Mr. Lenity, Assistant Chief Lenity. And we welcome, honor him in his retirement and congratulate him, and we're gonna miss him. Erin, you wanna come up with it? This is his oldest daughter, Erin. She has, which is one of his big supporters, his other daughter, Nikki. Is not even be here because her son's graduating kindergarten, I believe, or something. Pre-K. So, he's got four grandkids and two daughters that, you know, a big part of our family, too. And, of course, they're gonna be around, so we'll all see them.
This is presented to Mark Lenity, Palacka Fire Department, September 6, 1982 to May 31, 2016. Assistant Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Lieutenant and Engineer, and Sparky the Fire Dog. With sincere appreciation for your 34 years of service to the citizens, officials, and staff of the city of Palacka. Palacka City Commission, May 26, 2016.
First of all, I'd like to thank God. I'd like to thank my family. All the city firefighters that I work with, other departments, the police department. I mean, you guys have all been great to work with. I wanna thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to do what I do. I did it with honor. I loved the position and turned over to a fellow captain that's taking my position over. He's gonna do an excellent job. It's tough, because this is probably the last time I'm wearing a uniform, is tonight. I've been off this week. I go back to work on the 31st for my last day. Being the new fire marshal has lots to discuss, but I cannot express how much fun and excited, excitement that I've had since I've been fire marshal. I appreciate the chief for trusting me in the assistant chief position and fire marshal position. He's been chief for quite a while now, and I've worked with a great group of guys. These guys work their fannies off for the protection of everyone that lives in this city. They do a lot of stuff outside the city. They do stuff with the county. We do a lot of training with the county, and these guys are second to none in this state. Like you said, we're ISO rating of two. It's like 1.6% of the departments in the country are two. And we're, we are two, which we're quite proud of. Took us a while to get it, and we finally did get it. Like you said, a lot of hard work and effort from all the firefighters. I'm gonna miss it, and I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
As we, as we thank Assistant Chief Lenity, we, we're remiss if we don't thank you, Jill, for lending him to us for 34 years and being a part of this family. And we definitely hope that you guys get an opportunity to truly enjoy retirement. So again, thank you for your service. Chief Shaw, if you could join me at the podium at this time.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be able to speak about a detective for our department who's done some outstanding things. If I could, can I have Captain Forsyth come up with you, please? Tonight, we are recognizing Detective Lazo for his accomplishments in a drug investigation, a year-long drug investigation that affected numerous arrests, changed an entire neighborhood, and brought it back and gave it back to its residents and back to the city. There was four houses that was torn down and basically brought life back into that whole neighborhood. Through his accomplishments, through his hard-working heart and his effort, he was honored as the Crime Stoppers Officer of the Year. Detective Lazo, can you come up, please? At Crime Stoppers, Detective Lazo was presented with a plaque and a weapon, a gun, as a trophy for his accomplishments and recognition for everything that he's done. Officers like this are great for our department. But they're also great for the city because they show that they're not only looking forward to coming to work every day, but they look forward to giving back to the city and turning the city what we, into what we want and look forward to be by making it better as an entire department and as a entire community. We love what Detective Lazo has done, and we love what he's doing as far as teaching other fellow detectives to continue to follow his lead and do great work within the city of Palacka. Detective Lazo, we appreciate you, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you. I had the leadership of Chief Shaw, at the time it was Lieutenant Shaw. And I learned a lot from him, and everything I have accomplished is because of him. Thank you.
Chief Lambert. Next, we have our Palacka Fire Explorer CPR and EMR Program Certification, Recognitions.
I do need to mention, Fire Marshal Lenity actually started the Fire Explorer program back in about '92, '93. We had a really strong post. Matt Reynolds was one of our first explorers. I can name several of them that are chiefs and are ranking officer of the departments. It went strong for about 10 years, and we started up just recently, you know, less than a year ago, six months ago. Unfortunately, we didn't talk to the kids about they'd be here tonight, so we don't have a big turnout. We've got a few. We just went through a CPR program and Emergency Medical Services Provider Program Training, which Francis helped with. JR is gonna talk about that program a little bit, about explorers. Thought tonight'd be a good night, because this is the last night of the school year with having, you know, the kids show up and be recognized, because we are looking for new members. Captain Grimes will explain what it takes to be a member, and we'll take over from here.
All right, thank you. Our post meets on every Monday night at our Klarke Fire Station at 500 North Moody Road. We start at 5, run to 7, so there's some kids that are completed the eighth grade or 14-years-old, whichever one comes first. Please come join us, you know, we're always looking for new kids, and we're having fun. We got eight kids now that we just got through a CPR and Emergency First Responder course. So, we're building up. I mean, that's the first step that they're gonna have to take to be able to pursue a career. So this is just kinda gets their feet wet, so they can get out there and kinda just learn what we're, what we're doing. I mean, this is the first stop where, you know, as we, as we progress, we can get them to ride in a fire truck with us, and they can come and learn really what we do. So, I mean, these kids have put in a lot of time. They did 45 hours of training just as the EMR part of it, which is Emergency Medical First Responder, which is the first step of the medical side of our business, okay? And they also did a four-hour CPR class, so all of our fire explorers we currently now have are EMR and CPR certified along with AEDs, okay? These kids range anywhere from 14 to 18-years-old. We can keep them up till 21, as long as they're, you know, still doing what they need to be doing and active in the community and going to school. So, anytime anybody that wants to join, we're always, like I said, we're looking for new ones. Please contact me, I'm at the main fire station, they'll get you my number. If we can help any way like that, I would be delighted, too. We do have one here tonight, actually we have a couple of them. One of them's still on their way, he forgot what time he was supposed to be here. So that, that kinda happens, you know, dealing with the young kids. One of our adult leaders also completed it, Ms. Lindsey Lambert, she'd come up, we got her card here. She, she's a big help, because even when we're out doing our normal business, if we're on shift, we have to have a leader stay behind with the kids. You know, we're doing this on duty, some of us are coming in off-duty to do it. And we can really count on Lindsey to be there in our time absence if we have another emergency that happens inside the city. So she really does put in a lot of time, and I think we owe her a round of applause. Taylor, if you'll step up. Taylor started with us, I think, the first night. She's hung in there with us, she's doing really, really good. I think she's, what grade did you just finish? Ninth grade, so she's gonna be with us for a little bit longer. She's doing a fantastic job. She's one of our leaders, she's really stepping into that role, she's taking charge. She's gonna, she's gonna make it here one day, so we're very proud of Taylor. And here you go, Ms. Taylor. The other three, we have, the Francis Fire Department helped us with this. It was a kind of a joint effort between us. They supplied us an instructor to help teach some of the classes. They've also got two of their people that had just, that are, just got to the age where they can do it. So it was right about that time, so we said, hey, let's do it, get them through the class, and now they're gonna join our Explorer program. Has Blaine made it in yet? He hasn't made it, okay. Rosa, Rosa Shorop, she's gonna be joining us here in the next week or so, I think, soon as eighth grade gets done. So, Chief Dennis, if you'll get that, this is, I'm sorry, this is Chief Dennis from the Francis Fire Department. He's kinda helped us put on the. Mrs. Remesha Ropp, she's joining us, too, I believe, in the next week or so, if I'm not mistaken. There's a couple of them, I mean, there's still, I'd still like to say that their names are front of you also, in case you do know them, I mean, they did complete it. Some of them are playing football, some of them have got other extracurricular activities to do on different nights of the week. I mean, they are giving us their Monday nights, so we'd like to recognize them as well. Morgan Bell, she was one of our people that started with us back in August when we started last year. Michael Ennis. Mikey's there for everything, I can't believe, I just texted him a minute ago and said, hey, man, were you coming? He's like, for what? I'm like, I told you 100 times on Monday night to be at the city commission meeting. He goes, oh, I thought it was next week. So he's probably on his way up here, but he's really, he's really, really good. He's developing into quite a young man. Emmanuel Robinson, he's playing football right now, but he, he went through the whole program. Rebecca and Brianna Nelson have also completed it. They're from here in town, and Blaine Bishop, he was gonna be here in a minute, but he works today's hardware and interlocking and just hasn't got off to working time, so. But we've got about eight to 10 kids, we wanna get somewhere around 20, you know, it's a good number. So if you know any kids that wanna do it, it's a, it's a good clean activity. We'll help them with homework, we'll help them get through whatever they need, you know? Just sometimes they need to come in around some people that are just different and talk. And I mean, it's kids their age that are, they're doing positive things, so. They're also getting community service hours for stuff that they're doing. So I mean, so it's important, some of the scholarship stuff. So, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's put on through the Boy Scouts of America. You know, they, they, they take all of our information, and they give us our insurance and stuff. So that's, that's who the program's through, so I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Ma'am, I would like to thank our Fire Department for including young women. For a long time, it was a man or a girl.
Now we move on to item D of our recognitions. I'm gonna call Coach Steve Gonzalez and the administration, and administrators that are here from Palacka High School. And also Coach Wookerson. Mr. Wookerson. This is the one team at Palacka High School that I never would've made. So Coach G, if you could come over. We oftentimes wanna take time out to recognize our young people when they're doing great things in our community. But we also wanna take this time out to make sure that we recognize a team that's really made history throughout the course of this year. A few years ago, it was a unit that was building. And I remember being around Coach G coming in from Interlocken. And sometimes Coach G can be the most hated coach of all, because he's gonna work you harder than anybody's ever worked you before. But the hard work paid off, and I saw these kids develop over the years into champions. And we wanted to just take this time out to recognize them. I'm gonna give Coach G a moment to really kinda express kinda his gratitude to these young folks. But as we do that, I wanna make sure that we kinda understand the history that's in place. So Coach G, if you could come up and maybe just give a quick summary of what took place this year.
All right. This year, we, we was able to accomplish a lot of things. First one was, at the Bob Hayes, we were able to have the, make history with the first male and female 100-meter sprinter to come from the same school and win the 100 meters. It's never happened in the history of the Bob Hayes. Bob Hayes has been going on for 54 years. We're the first, first school to ever have the male and female win the 100 meters at the Bob Hayes. Girls this year were able to be district runner-up with 11 girls, competed against teams that had 20-plus girls. A lot of them made the sacrifices to run out of, out of their events, to make the sacrifice of some relays and stuff like that to be able to win the, be the runner-up team. The boys team, second in a row, district champs. The girls, where eight girls at regionals placed third out of 39 schools. The boys won regionals, went on to go to state. The girls finished eighth overall with four girls, and placed overall eighth in the state. And the boys finished third in the state, missed out runner-up by four points. We had Katia Seymour win the 100 and 200 at the state. We had the girls of the four-by-one, which was Kari Rasher, Tezaria Poole, Jalen Hendricks, and Katia Seymour. Those girls are the first girls, from what I've been told, and I gotta check the history on it, to be state champions from girls from the track team. And on the boy's side, basically everybody that went to the state meet, except for one kid, met her. We took 10 boys, four, four girls. Everybody met at the state meet. State champion was Aaron Carter in the Discus, and he won the state championship last year as well, and runner-up in the shot put.
What we're gonna do this time is, we're gonna call them out one by one and have them come out, and we're gonna recognize them. On the girl's side, we have Deja Bellamy. Makuria Cosin. Michelle Dampier. Michael Foster. Artanza McCray. Jartiana Milton. Abriel Robertson. We also have, for the boys, Zuma Brown. Cameron Chandler. Robert Cliff. Brandon Hampton. Michael Harris. Jaquan Hines. Andrew Leary. Cameron Park. Nadarius Parker. LeVar Smith. Blaine Snyder. Camden Sweat. Kobe Williams. Pick-six, Sammy Wright. Now on the girl's side, our state-ranked individuals, we're gonna call up Katia Seymour. As she comes up, she's 100-meter state champion, 200-meter state champion, and she's also a part of the four-by-one relay that also won the state championship. Also on the four-by-one relay state championship team, Kari Rasher. Four-by-one state relay champions, Tezaria Poole. Last but not least, Jalen Hendrick, state champion in four-by-one. I wanna ask these state champions just to step out for just one second. These young ladies have done something that hasn't been done in the history of this, in the history of this community. They went out and they won a state championship. And you're probably gonna see them do the same thing next year with a whole bunch of pressure on them. They're gonna be better and faster. But they, they identified and they truly advanced what teamwork does in this community. They worked together, and they brought the medal home. For the boys, Stephen Simmons. Ranked fourth, Stephen is ranked fourth in the 100 meters and 200 meters in the state. He was also in the 200 meters and the four-by-two relay, ranked fifth in the state. And so we, we look forward to Stephen winning it next year. Discus state, district state runner, district state champion and shot-put runner-up, Virginia Tech football signee, Aaron Carter. Tech football signee, Aaron Carter. My favorite offensive lineman at Palaca High School, seventh in the state in the Discus, State qualifier, Peyton Snyder. On the fifth-ranked four-by-one relay team, Trevon Williams. Better known as Macaroni. Also, on the four-by-one, Kevan Presley. Four-by-one relay, fifth-ranked in the state, Robert Passmore. Stone, where's Stone? Four-by-four relay, fifth in the state, Damarie Gibbons. Four-by-one relay, fifth in the state, Monster, Dontavion Evans. Four-by-four relay, fifth in the state, Kendrick Aaron. And because you guys truly represent what Palaca stands for, we want to make sure that we take time out to give you a token of our appreciation and something that you can remember this community by. And these are our official pins for the city of Palaca. I'm gonna give these out to all of you.
Good job, guys. Good job.
And I, I would be remiss if I did not call up Ms. Mary Beth Headstrom, who's the principal of Palaca High School. Just for her, I want her to make sure that she says, that she gets some party shots out there too.
I think that all the applause and glory needs to go to the students and Coach G. So let's hear it for the students and Coach G.
And so guys, we didn't think it was robbery to let you know that we appreciate you, that we love the representation that you have for this community. You guys truly exemplify what student athletes are and what citizens of this community are. And we enjoy the fact that you guys are shining examples for everyone else at Palaca High School. You represent us well, we love you for it, and we thank you for your service. Vice Mayor Brown, you're on top. One of our traditions here is we like to recognize our Students of the Month. And it's an opportunity for us to say thank you to our students for the great job that they've done and the representatives of the schools, but also to the parents and the family that supports these young people. Because we know that it truly takes a village to raise a child. And at this time, we want all our parents and family that have accompanied our students from both the track team as well as the Student of the Month to stand up at this time because we need to applaud you guys. So as we, what we're gonna do right now, we'll, we'll call out the names of the student. We're asking the representative from the schools to accompany the student up front. They'll receive their certificate from Vice Mayor Brown. We'll actually have everyone gather around the front. After we finish passing out all the certificates, we'll then have everyone line up in a single file line. We'll take a brief recess. If there's anyone that wants to take a picture, we'll do that at that time. The first picture we take will be for the newspaper. We'll gather up in a group. We'll take the picture for the newspaper with the students involved. And then from there, we can take any family pictures that you want to take at that time. So as we get started, first student from Browning Pierce Elementary School, Samaria Manda Cetner for her. From CL Overterre Junior Sixth Grade Center, Dante Wilkerson. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, Mackenzie Clemens. From EH Miller School, Landon Pierce. Congratulations, Landon. Hey, let's give Landon another round of applause. From James Day Long Elementary, Carson Tibbs. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Natalie Bernie. From Mellon Elementary School, Jasmine Butler. Mr. Stebo's gonna get it for her. From Mosley Elementary, Paris Mack. From our Palaca High School, Lauren Hudson. From Pennile Baptist Academy, Austin Wallace. Last but not least, and the hardest name to pronounce, from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Raven Castantino. So guys, we want to take this time out to thank you for what you do in school. For the, we want to recognize you for being Students of the Month. It's a very simple thing that I learned in third grade, and I like to say it every time we talk to kids up here. It says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are definitely somebody. You represent our community well, and we look for more great things out of you. And we thank you for, for We're gonna take a brief recess at this time, and we'll go ahead and take our photo for the newspaper, and then we'll line up from there. We ask all the students to come up front. We'll make two lines.
Florida is looking at a lot of paradigms like that. And we need to look at revising our flood code, flood code to make sure that we provide protection for future development within areas that are vulnerable. And we talked a little bit about the future development types. That is it for my presentation. There's a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them between now and the next month, essentially. I'm open to any ideas that you have because the comp plan is kind of like a welcome place for good ideas. So I think if you have them, I'd be happy to work them into the plan and provide a document that reflects all of our vision.
Got one speaker card. I got Mr. Nelson. I got Mr. Nelson for item four.
Good evening. John Nelson, PHA 400 North 15th Street. Let me offer a couple of disclaimers. First, one, I'm not here to talk about subsidized housing. Okay? And I'm not here to, at this point, support the housing request for the 100 block. But I would like to ask that the commission consider putting on their list of items that are important to the city. Housing. There's a great need for housing in the city. And I'm not, again, I'm not talking about public housing. Talking about housing for people to live in, people who are employed. There's a need for it. And in my opinion, it should be on the major issues list.
It's number three.
Pardon me?
It's number three on our list.
On our priority?
It's only on our, number three on our priority.
So on your priority list, okay. It's not, it's not in, in fast area.
Sustainability issue number six, but yeah, it's a subset, essentially.
Okay. That's, that's my comment.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
Last month, I went to Norfolk, Virginia, to meet with 13 other states in northeast regions, which Florida, legal cities. They sent eight of us. It is something I think that we need to really look at as the sea, sea level rise. It, it's become a, a big problem. And I know that we have been lucky that our St. John River has not flooded us. But we need to make sure that that's put and stays on our agenda. They took a lot of the things that they were gonna do with sea rise and, and put it into how to make better parks and recreational things for people. So I want to make sure that we add that to, and make sure it's included well in our list. It's here already, but that may be something that they might need to toggle a little bit more to get a little bit more information on.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thanks, sir.
We'll now move on to item five on the agenda. It's a request for contract amendment number two to allow ground floor residential on the 100-block development, Riverfront Square Development Group LLC, Joseph C. Diamond, General Manager. Sharba.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. Before I proceed, I'd actually like to get a sense of the commission as to which of these two items you would like to hear first. I, I understand, but the cover letter in your agenda packet presupposes that item six has been heard prior to number five being presented. If you look at the, the letter, it says, whether or not the commission could, should, could consider this request is dependent upon the outcome of the concurrent request to appeal the planning board's denial of his application for a conditional use permit to construct multifamily housing in the 100-block development, which will be heard by the commission prior to this request for contract amendment. So it's left me kind of at your discretion. I'd prefer to do the, the appeal issue first, if that's what you'd like to hear. It's definitely, it's a longer item and it's germane.
We're gonna do the, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do item five first. Just kind of stated in the planning meeting, the two items are separate and independent of one another. So we'll go ahead and continue on as written so that there is no confusion.
All right. At this time, personally introduce myself. I'm Kevin Sharbaugh with the office of Kaiser Sharbaugh of Interlocken, Florida, representing Riverfront Development Group. I'm going to do a piece of presentation in a moment, but first we're gonna have Mr. Townsend, who's a spokesperson for Riverfront Development Group, basically to introduce the issue.
Hello. Tom Townsend, CIC Plant, 605 North 3rd Street. Thank you for having us. And what I'd like to do is just talk a brief history about the project for all stakeholders as we lead up to this and the importance of this modification and our partnership. As most are aware, but maybe not everyone, the city purchased the property in 1997. And for many years, we've all recognized the importance as it sits in our gateway. And commissions, previous commissions have worked hard and even made progress. As a matter of fact, in 2008, they entered into an agreement with a, a company called CDP and said that they wanted to move forward. And they looked at the comp plan and they wanted to get housing down, get people downtown. It's a big part of a comp plan. CDP came with a proposal and the city sent them forth. And they got as far as, even though they weren't able to secure funding, they were able to secure a lease with the city. A lease that allowed for 22 units upstairs in the same buildings we're talking about today. And that's, that's very important and relevant to what we're talking about today because we've known for a long time that we're gonna have a revitalized downtown, a place where commerce has a real opportunity and people interact, and we need people. And the best way to get people is to have them living in that district. So, so keep that in mind. Even though that was not successful, we kept on. So what happens in, in 2013, in comes Riverfront Development Group. And they saw in Palaca potential that we talk about every day. People like me who've lived here for 50 years have said, "We've got such potential. What are we gonna do?" But they took that potential, and they took their money, and they invested in Palaca. They invested in some of our, our only historic downtown buildings that were degraded to the fact that we were all concerned on losing them. And I think we all know, there was a lot of bloodshed over, do we keep the buildings or not? But those that wanted the buildings won, and they were preserved. But it made finding a developer much more difficult. So then they came, and here we are. Entered into a contract. Work began. And the contract, really, I want to talk about is a partnership. Because we found somebody that says, "We're going to invest. We believe in Palaca. We can turn this around. We can save these buildings." And we began. And they went to work. And with the city's help, we cleaned out those buildings, with the city, the engineering, all, all the things we did with a partnership to bring together, got to work. And we started seeing progress. Then questions arise. You know, we started seeing the balconies, and there was, there was, well, how'd they get the balconies? I thought they were just doing demolition now. Well, they were allowed to do that for shoring up. And I think it really shows the innovation that's needed in order for us to have a successful developer. Not only did those balconies fall within the required limits of shoring up the building, they also allowed all of us to start getting the vision to stop, quit talking about that potential and start seeing these things come to life. And you can, wherever you are, and I have friends opposing our, this project and certainly friends for it. But wherever you are, you cannot deny that for 17 years, properties that were off the tax trail that were degrading are now coming back to life. It's more than a ray of sunshine. It is not only hope, it is actual activity. So when we're talking to you, what we want you to think about, again, is in terms of partnership. We fully understand the disappointment when, when we're presented the fact that we wanted high-end condos. Who doesn't? We still do. But there's a reality. That market isn't in Palaca yet. We're going to have to build it. And I think if you spoke to those that, again, for or again, and you asked them, "Is that market there?" It isn't. All you have to do is take a look at our demographics. It's not from a lack of trying or trying to put it out there. And it's not from actually investing and making a difference so that those that you're marketing to can see where it's coming. It just isn't there yet. So what do we do? What do we do as partners for the best use now? For the things that not only are gonna affect the so-called 100 block, Riverfront Square, but all of downtown? What's the best thing that we can do for all those merchants? We currently have, about a third of our commercial space on St. John's Avenue is vacant. We all want that info. We want that commercial viability. There's no argument there. And we certainly want it all along Second Street. But how are we gonna get there? Because what we're talking about is a project that we have sat by for decades, thinking of how are we gonna build? And now we're in the middle of it. And we are building, and it is coming along. So all I ask, as Mr. Sharbaugh shows you these few slides, we're not contesting. You're right. Matter of fact, I would commend you on the fact that when this new commission came in, the scrutiny that you gave the contract, because it gave us a chance to renew the partnership. And we did have an issue that we, we disagreed on the interpretation, but we brought it to light and we talked about it. And we said, "What's best?" And what happened was, we can now look, that you made the right decision. Because in those three months, there's been a tremendous amount of progress made. And in addition to that, you gave greater protection to your taxpayers because in the event this doesn't go to completion, you're not only gonna get a building that has been saved, whether Mr. Diamond finishes this or not, this building's saved. And nobody if it had kept going two more years, I don't even believe that would have happened. Your buyback is $150,000 less. That's how partnerships do. How do we make something happen for a common goal that we can both look at and agree? So that contract is the guideline in your protection. But it is also the partnership security that allows us to come to you and say, "Here's what we want to do, and here's why." I'm now gonna turn this over to Mr. Sharbaugh. He's gonna show a few slides, and then I'm gonna get back and try and brush you up just a little bit more. a little bit more. All right?
Take this computer if you would. Tom, take this slide. All right. At this time, the applicant would ask that the city commission consider Riverfront Development Group's request to modify the uses that are permissible at the property by adding the following language to the contract. This is in your packet. Nowwithstanding any provision in this contract or exhibit there too, buyer may use the first floor of the building known as the Wine Guard Building, located at 117 North Second Street, for either commercial or residential uses. And the statement goes on a little bit further from there, basically that the seller agrees to record that, recognition of that in public record. So that is the, the request that we are presenting to you as the city commission to consider modifying the use of this agreement for the purpose of that one building. The Wine Guard Building is the one that is on Reed Street and North Second. So if you look at the picture here, it's this two-story building right there on the left-hand side of the picture. That's the Wine Guard.
For your record, it's, it's the second page in under item five on the back, just before exhibit two.
The Wine Guard Building, my apologies, this is the Wine Guard Building right there. And so the developer is asking that you consider modifying the use restriction that currently exists based on the drawings in the contract to allow a little more flexibility with the use of the first floor of that building. Here is a, the drawing of what the developer would like to do with that first floor, which is basically to use it for four residential units, which would then leave the other three buildings all with commercial uses. This is the second floor and up in the right-hand corner is the third floor showing residential dwelling there. I would like to point out a couple of paragraphs in the contract that exists currently between Riverfront Development and the city. Under 23.2, that is a paragraph talking about amendments to the contract. And it says, "No modification or amendment shall be made of any force or effect unless in writing executed by both seller and buyer." I only raise this basically to point out that this is actually the provision in the contract by which that previous issue that arose was dealt with. When the issue about the letter of credit came up, this was actually the, the paragraph in the contract that says, hey, here's how we make an amendment to the contract. What we're actually asking of you is to look under paragraph 27.1. And that paragraph talks about development use restrictions. And in part, it says, in part, it says that buyer and seller agree, the property and the manner of its development is of critical concern to the seller, that's the city, and the buyer, that's the developer. Because of the impact said development will likely have upon the surrounding property located within seller's downtown and riverfront areas. And we couldn't agree more that it is the heart of, of the city. It's the gateway coming across the bridge. That paragraph goes on to say, accordingly, buyer and seller agree that buyer's use of that portion of the property, the development of that portion of the property designated within exhibit A as phase one of area one, and I'll reference that in just a second, initial development, shall be in accord with and consistent with those drawings, diagrams, and descriptions set forth within exhibit C. Attached here to and incorporated by reference here in, contemplated improvements. This is what we're talking about, is this drawing, exhibit C, it's also in your packet, page one of four. And this is again, an overhead view of that first floor of the buildings. And you'll see that down here in the bottom left-hand corner of that drawing, there's a little statement there that says, first floor use, commercial, retail, restaurant. That's the language in this entire contractual agreement that restricts the use of that entire first floor of all four of those buildings to those uses. Because he has to do it, the developer has to do it in accordance with that. Toward the back end of that paragraph, 27.1, it anticipates that there may be reasons for the seller to, to want to agree to some kind of a change here. So it says, nothing within this paragraph or within this contract shall be deemed as requiring seller, the city, to consent to any modification of the approved permissible structures and uses, which is what we're talking about, the use, at any time. But instead, seller retains the right in its sole and absolute discretion to consider any request to modify the uses and structures that are permissible at the property. And the zoning for that building allows for residential per the zoning statute for the downtown Riverfront District. So it would be permissible at that property. And we're basically, the developer's asking for the flexibility to whatever works best first, put that use, put that to use with that particular building. And then beyond that, if the market moves to where the commercial is the, the hot ticket, then I'm sure that, that's what's gonna drive the next decision-making with regard to that space. So that is what is being requested. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Kevin. I feel certain we're gonna hear many varying opinions, as you already have. And I think being on the river, came across Mark Twain quote, which I thought was pretty, pretty relevant. I'm not one of those who, in expressing, I better put my glasses on so I can read it. I'm not one of those who in expressing opinions combine themselves to facts. I think all of us at some point in our life can relate to that comment. However, the facts in this case matter for this, this suggestion. Not that anybody's opinion is valued more than one or the other. In fact, if I were to take, go out to dinner with my family, I guarantee you, we'd have many different opinions on where we went as we had people. But if I offered to buy a dinner, they'd take a second look at my opinion. And I think that's what we're talking about here, is we found a partner. We found a partner that says, I'm willing to invest. And as we've gone down this road together, there's not much, I think, argument about whether or not the original proposal is a viable financial one. Now, I will tell you this, we're committed. We're gonna get those buildings finished. That alone is gonna be a tremendous asset to the city. But we are talking about partnerships, because we don't want our partner to stop. We want him to be successful. A beautiful finished building coming over the bridge will be nice. But it's not the same as a building that's filled with people that are going to help provide the commerce that we so desperately need. When you look at the comp plan and you, you notice the, the emphasis on getting people live downtown. And you look at the actual decisions that are being made in this town, just within the last couple of years, an apartment building just a block off of St. John's demolished. That's not what we're trying to do. So what we're really asking is think about the realities, the facts that are before us, when it comes to not completing the building, but filling the building. The realities in creating a commercial district that is vibrant. The struggles that you are more aware of when just scanning the evaluation of the comp plan. And maybe I, you probably have this, but I just looked at the sheet. I think since 2008, there's been 35 housing permits. I was shocked. So here we have seventeen-year drought with dilapidated buildings. And today, $1.8 million put in it. And as a partner, we're asking, actually, we're sharing the reality of our economic condition that you know. And we're saying, so what's best? We're going to build that bottom floor up. And you say it needs to be commercial, it'll be commercial space. But how valuable is another empty commercial space when a thirty-year downtown is currently That's the question. We believe it's a better use, not only for the Riverfront Square project, but for the entire downtown. We believe it sends the right message to those that have large buildings down there, that the conditional use to improve that, to get more people, is something you should be coming for and invest. I believe that many, I'm absolutely confident that many of us are looking at this project and what's going to happen. One of the things that I've been so appreciative for, not only do I personally believe in this project, but now I've been assigned to go out and talk to people, is those and the concerns they have. And we've heard some of them, not gonna be able to get the rent, low-rent housing, or subsidized housing. And it kinda references the quality of people, not deliberately, but when we talk about partnership and what we want to do, we're talking about building a commercial district that's vibrant. It's not about the quality of people, it's about wanting to have people down there with discretionary dollars. The only concern about subsidized housing is that those are people that need help to make their rent and they're not going to be in a position at that time to move forward. We're clearly in agreement. We're willing to offer any necessary language to, to be restrict, to say, that's not where we wanna go. The market will, the market has and always will dictate what anyone gets for their product. We believe we're building a product that not only enhances the beauty of Palatka that is marketable. And we're willing to spend our money on it. And what we're asking you is to take that into consideration, the experience that you have had, the success that we are having, think about what we are trying to do with the comp plan and decide whether or not you want to grant that flexibility for what we think is a best use now, that we're convinced will help everyone. I think I would, I don't know if Mr. Sharba wants to add anything about any of the events here or anything, but that's, that's where we are. So this is, please accept us in the sincerity that we come, that we, we dream right along with everyone, so much that we are, are investing heavily in making that progress. But we also have to, to look at the facts. And the fact is, right now, we will be a more successful project if we're able to have housing on that first floor in that one building furthest from St. John's Avenue, the furthest away from the overlay. That would be very helpful, make us more successful, and I believe make everybody in downtown more successful and bring more investment. Any questions?
Does this, does this request comply with overlay?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Your overlay identifies the Riverfront, downtown Riverfront District as being from the river to Fourth Street, Reed Street, St. John's, Oak, Laurel. The corridor of St. John's Avenue is your retail core and it requires that all first floor on that road, that street, St. John's, is required to be commercial. Everything else is defined in your ordinance as the periphery. And the periphery, it's, it's available for residential. And so from a zoning perspective, it is even, the only thing preventing the developer from being able to use that space on the first floor as residential is the language on the bottom left-hand corner of that drawing.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Same question.
Mr. Mayor, try to keep it as simple as possible. The overlay has two zones essentially, one being St. John's Avenue that we call the core, and everything else we call the periphery. There's specter standards in the core along St. John's Avenue, the Mournier Building is directly affected by that. We have reviewed the Mournier Building and, and the elevations that have been proposed and it does comply with the overlay. As far as the other buildings, the requirements are less stringent. However, keep in mind that the building fronting Reed Street is also bound by the major thoroughfare standards, which is a separate ordinance which they have to comply with. So the applicant has, to a certain degree, been shifting in some of the elevations and designs and we put the applicant on notice that ultimately they have to meet all these standards. I can't tell you that at this point in time, they meet them. The Mournier Building, I can tell you, does meet the overlay standards. The other buildings, at this point in time, it's too soon to tell.
And may I have a question?
In that, in that analysis, you're considering these as four separate buildings rather than one building project?
That's right.
And the down, the Reed Street, or what did you call it, main corridor standard, highway corridor standard?
Yes, the major thoroughfare standards.
That too. What can you give us in twenty words or less, the significant requirements of that particular corridor standard?
Applicable to this, really, the key ones are no blank walls, make sure you break up the, the building with windows, with a certain symmetry, fifteen percent of the building face has to be window coverage. That's the main one right there.
Are there, are there any restrictions on first floor residential in the, in the Riverfront District?
In the periphery, there are not restrictions like that. However, the conditional use, the planning board has the ability, or you have the ability in this case, to go above and beyond what the minimum code requires.
Yeah, we're not talking about the, the conditional use right now. We're just talking about the pure contractual provision that the applicant agreed upon, agreed to when, when the building was sold to them.
I've got a few speaker cards that are filled out. I'm gonna call Mark Spalding first, we'll go and handle those and then we'll take questions from the commissioners.
And just so that everyone knows, before you get started, Mr. Spalding, we're, we're strictly considering the, the, the request for modification. This is, this doesn't have anything to do with the planning board's decision.
Right, yes, I understand that. Mark Spalding, 3400 Crow Avenue, Palatka, Florida. Mayor Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I think the first thing I wanna say is, I'm ashamed of myself and for that, is not getting involved in this sooner. I should've been involved from ten years ago. I've been, been in business in Palatka for 30 years, in real estate business. And downtown was developing, I knew what was going on, but I didn't get involved. So I'm ashamed of myself for that. My father had a building, an office in 109 North Second Street, so I'm very familiar with the buildings, property, what, what it used to be. Part of what's been said is, you know, a lot of history, a lot of history's correct. The jail was put down there first, that was a mistake. That was back in my father's era. Jail was removed, we now have a beautiful Riverfront there. The hotel came up, you know, hotels going in, gonna have convention centers. I went to my Kiwanis Club. I said, folks, we need to be the first one in line to get in one of those meeting rooms and have our Kiwanis Club meet down there on Tuesday at noon. And he said, okay, we'll check into it. And next thing I heard, oh, we're not having meeting rooms. So well, that's what I thought I heard. I assumed they had a contract, that contract was changed, maybe there were public meetings, some of y'all were here, some of you weren't. I don't know. Again, I'm ashamed for not being here and knowing the answer to that. So a contract was done, it was changed, or an agreement was done, or what the public was perceived to be told. And, and it didn't work. Here we are again, we're trying to get a contract, an agreement that was agreed upon to be changed. Part of the reason that the condos did not work is the, the cost of what has been said in past public meetings of what they were gonna be. The, the condos at the price they were gonna be sold at, that was not feasible, it was not realistic. So we're now down to asking for more residential units downtown. In my opinion, the concept that he's now asking for is not reasonable. We'll be down the same path and going the same way again as we did with the first dream. Condos were great, it was not feasible. I don't think the housing units that have been proposed upstairs or downstairs are feasible. The, Mr. Thog, Mr. Thad Crowe gave a presentation. I really think the historical preservation, I wasn't around 100 years ago, but I don't think they had residential living downstairs. I think it was, everybody lived upstairs, and retail, commercial was downstairs. The preservation of what the overlay is. You have a downtown business zoning, I don't think it's in that, that residential can be downstairs. So, I think what the applicant is asking for just does not fit any of our plans. It's just going against what we have already repeated in history, and history will repeat itself. We don't want it to repeat itself again. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Bates.
Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I heard a comment made earlier that facts matter. So, let's talk about some facts, if we may. We all are interested in the development of our Riverfront. That is the key to the city of Palatka. When you enter this city, that is the first building that you see. When you're coming over the bridge, that is the first building that you see. We were promised, and the reason I know we were promised, was because I own the property at the corner of First Street and Reed Street. And the city approached me and said, we have to have your property. We want to do a nice development downtown and improve our city. I didn't want to sell the property, but I did, because I thought it was in the best interest of what the city wanted and what the city division they had. You can rest assured, if they had indicated to me in any form or fashion that we would be where we are today, I would still own that block, and there'd be no parking lot behind this facility. So, when we talk about facts, as I said a couple of weeks ago, I had never met Mr. Diamond until two weeks ago. So, I got no game in this. Other than I do love this town, I've been in this town and been in business over 41 years, and have worked hard to make our town as the very best that we can. So, in talking about facts, we're talking about housing units of some 600 square feet. 600 square feet, 20 by 30, give or take. That's what we were told. Those units are going to rent for $2,250 per unit. Ladies and gentlemen, if the condos wouldn't go, and a 300,000 condominium would cost, on a monthly rate, probably about 60% of what a 600-unit apartment is going to rent for, it doesn't make sense. It's not a business plan that's going to function. A 600, that's what we're talking about, that's what we were told. If I'm incorrect, then you tell me. We look at the parking, there's 35 parking units with that. You put the, if you allow the number of residential units that you want, all the parking is taken up. You've got no parking for the commercial or anything else. I will contend that there's question about how many buildings are actually there. I know that, I know what the city says. However, I believe I'm correct in this. The only permits that has been pulled by the city is a demolition permit for the entire project. And then, there's a permit that has been pulled for a part of the project. All that work going on in that unit, if I'm incorrect, then Mr. Crowe can correct me, but there's no permit that has been pulled. And we're, and I'm looking and saying to myself, if I'm a businessman, I don't think I would be spending, as I was told, $1.8 million on a project, when I don't even have a building permit. I just question the logic behind that, because, pardon me?
Tom, you've got 10 seconds to wrap up.
Okay. So, we're looking at parking, we're looking at compatibility, we're looking at facts as we, as we look at that, you know? You have a signed contract, we encourage you to enforce your contract and move forward. You've amended it once, I think that's enough, and we're interested, but we want a project that will be viable and will last in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Martinez.
Dan Martinez, 320 Round Lake Road, Palatka. No need for me to repeat anything that's been said, or may be said later. I'll wait for number six. The fact remains that the commission is being led down the path into bind to a pig and a polk. I hate to be blunt about it, but you continue with this changes as they take place, and you and I are going to regret it. Unfortunately, the regret will last a long, long time.
Vito Russo.
My name's Vito Russo, 415 Emmett Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for letting me speak. Just briefly, many people in our community view the situation at the 100 block as an entrepreneur has come to our community to take a risk, take a chance on developing that property. And I believe that the city should do everything in its power to make sure that entrepreneur succeeds in this, in his endeavor. And I don't believe that the city should be putting up any roadblocks that would minimize his opportunity to succeed. So, I think minor changes in these contracts should not be used as a way of mitigating the chances of his success. So, I think a lot of people share my opinion in the city, and I would hope the city would be flexible and help Mr. Diamond succeed on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Turner.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Terry Turner, 455 East Den Road, San Mateo. I think that the history that was brought by the developer is very pertinent here, when two years ago, I find it very difficult to believe that if they'd have come here and said, if you sell me your property for 20 cents on the dollar, I'll put you a really nice, high-density, low-quality apartment building, like you just spent millions of dollars tearing down across the street. If you'll give me these incentives, I'll make you those promises. I don't believe they'd ever got this property to start with. So, now they've come from the promises that were made, and the incentives that were given two years ago, and because he's gone forward and moved forward in this, he thinks that he should, he deserves more consideration than what the original deal was. I hope this project does go forward, but with what was originally promised here. It was promised that they put high-end, low-density residential upstairs and retail downstairs. That's the reason why that side won to start with, and that they didn't just tear the buildings down, because of that fact. Now, two years later, they realize that that won't work, and so, instead of keeping their promise, that got them the incentives in the first place, now they want everybody to change and let them put a low-quality apartment building there. I don't think that's the right place to have it. I don't. Development, yes, nice project, yes, a high-density, low-quality apartment building, sorry, I can't get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Bushell.
My name is Tony Bushell, I live at 2 Luanne Circle, St. Augustine, Florida. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a vested interest in this, my family, company, I am the leasing manager. We own the property at 2 St. John's Avenue and the parking lot across the street. And we're rather excited that finally, somebody has actually done something. We've been there 10 years, and nothing's happened, and now it's happening. And I've heard that quite a few of the city fathers here obviously don't particularly like this, but, you know, living in St. Augustine, I've seen what's happened to the waterfront property, and having owned some of it, and taken it from pretty nasty condition, and doing one thing with it, and then having it later turned into either high-end condominiums or apartments, it's worked out well for us. But I definitely back this project, because I think if it stops, then the downtown redevelopment is, to a certain degree, stopped. Now, whether you want to do this again, I've seen so many people promise everybody so much and have done nothing. At least, this gentleman has come in, put his money where his mouth is, and is actually doing something. The 600-square-foot apartments, I could see there may be a problem there, but those 600-square-foot apartments can be opened out to 1,200, 1,800, 2,400, down the line. When the money's here and the banks are here, who are willing to lend that kind of mortgage money, that'd be great. Mr. Spalding sold me the building over there many years ago, and I had talked to him, and I think he concurred that someday this town was going to make it, and that we had actually thought about putting a third story on there, and doing two stories of apartments, as condominiums, with possibly a roof deck. And, you know, we were excited, but the banks went away, and I guess they needed our retirement, our money more than we did, so they took it, and we're back now, and we're trying again. But I have 11,000 square foot on the second floor that I have no, that I can't rent. It's useless, 10 years it's sat there. The only thing I've got stored up there is some papers. Anyway, thank you to the commission for letting me speak.
What building, what building do you say you own?
2 St. John's Avenue, where the bingo parlor is. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Lival.
Good evening, Commissioners, Councilor, Chip Lival, P.O., Box 420, Bostwick, Florida. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm here to talk kind of to the what-ifs. We've heard a lot of what-ifs, and they're usually negative. It's no secret that this county, this city, has an image situation, a challenge, I'll call it, that we're trying to overcome. I see this Century Block over here in a different light than the others you've heard tonight. We're going to disagree with some of my colleagues tonight. But what I see is something to help that image I'm talking about. When we grow up here, we don't see a lot of positive images in the last 20 years. Our children are grandchildren. I see coming over that bridge, children in a car looking at that building when it's full of young people, both going to tech school, to St. Augustine, I mean, to the St. John's River State College out here. And in that, public transportation deals that come from the schools, like Gainesville has, that has free bus routes to those schools, those teaching facilities. I see collegiate bass teams right across the street. We're the bass capital of the world. Why don't we have a high school and a college pro male and female bass fishing team? I mean, I could see that happening. Veritas Steel, over here sponsoring two or three boats, and our students going out every evening. It's right there. I see proud parents of students in our school systems over here, coming across the bridge, and their kids in the car saying, look at those kids, they have kayaks out there, they have Bartram Trail events every night they go on. We have a bicycle trail system running right through the heart of this town that connects this. See, also, the trail on the East Coast from Maine all the way to Key West, not to mention our rail trail coming from west Putnam and points beyond right through. Why don't we have a national bicycle team that's recognized because they grew up practicing on this trail? I see opportunities with this, I don't see it the other way. I really don't. I'm sorry we disagree on some of this, but I encourage you as a council to move on. I like what I see with the Riverfront development. You're delivering, when we had no delivery, for 20-plus years, and now we're getting there. A little unorthodox, yes, but go with the flow. Flex all you can right now, we need bodies downtown. I've been a property owner downtown, my father and grandfather, as has been said here tonight, for 60-plus years, going on 70. I've waited the majority of that time for this downtown to prosper, and it's time. And I think this council is moving it forward. I salute you, and thank you for hearing me tonight.
Ms. Kitchens.
Allegri Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street. I would like to ask you to support the contract amendment. In doing so, you're supporting the EAR that you just passed and asked to be sent to Tallahassee on page 77 of your agenda, which is 27 of the EAR report. In part, it says, "The CRA Plan highlights the need to provide more low-to-moderate income housing in the downtown area and to encourage private businesses." Amending this contract is doing exactly that, it's encouraging more housing in downtown Palatka. Back when CDP was in, they wanted to do 22 apartments, but we're not talking about the appeal or anything, we're only talking about the contract. This development company has put in millions of dollars of their money, they have, in good faith, worked on those buildings, they're improving them, and they are going to do good in the future, I think. You have nothing to lose, you will get the buildings back for $1 if you have to take them back. So, I would ask you to amend the contract so that this housing can have more units in this project, which complies with your EAR component. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment section. But is there any discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, can I have the man in the record come up, please? I guess my first question is, is this request compatible with the overlay, with the zoning requirement on St. John's Avenue?
Strictly speaking, it is. Strictly speaking, yes.
Okay. Also, is it?
Let me back up, let me make sure I understand the context of what we're saying here. The request to have the first-floor residential is what you're talking about?
Right, that's basically the request.
Let me just rephrase it, that is, does not conflict with the overlay.
Okay. Is the zoning, as it currently is, allowed?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Parking. You're talking, from what I understand, we're probably talking 35, I think, apartments total, and I think there were two, is it 35, is it two people, two?
The request was for, I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner, the request was for 19 apart, two-bedroom apartments, essentially. So, a total of 38 bedrooms.
Total of 38 bedrooms, plus two, and two people per bedroom, is what I read, I read that in my.
That's not clear, but zoning doesn't limit bedroom occupants, so zoning terms, we don't really have a say.
But this isn't a zoning issue, this is a contractual issue. So, can you answer that question?
Technically, there's not really a limitation, that I know of, on the number of occupants per bedroom, in place, anywhere.
If the request is granted, where, how would we arrange parking? How would the parking fit into this?
The downtown Riverfront, Riverfront Zoning District has parking requirements, it does exempt all commercial uses from minimum parking. However, for residential projects, the first three units, I believe, are exempt. So, you get a credit of three units. In this case, essentially, those first three units are credited, meaning they have to make up the parking for the 16 apartments. The parking requirement is two spaces for each two-bedroom apartment, therefore, they are required to have Therefore, they are required to have 16 times two, 32 parking places. They have 35 in the parking lot behind the building that they own outright. So they meet our parking standards zoning-wise.
Now, I'm confused about one thing. Sometimes you count this as four separate parcels, and sometimes you count this as one parcel for different things?
It depends on how you look at it. That's correct.
I mean, why is there consistency?
Because project parking pertains to the overall project. That's the way we've looked at it. The narrow interpretation of entitlements, we have interpreted to apply to buildings. Because the overlay is written in such a way that we've interpreted each property slash building gets two residential units. That applies to buildings.
Is it a single parcel?
It can be. In some cases, it is.
It has the parcel being combined.
In this case, when we, when the applicant submitted plans and started working with this, it was four separate parcels.
Now, today?
Now it is one parcel. But we believe they were vested. We continue to work with them on the basis of four separate parcels, because when they applied, that's how they came in.
So you consider it four because of where it started historically?
That's right.
Okay. Now, if you treated it under the present state, does it change any of your calculations?
Yes, very much so. If we treated it as one parcel, they'd be entitled to two, only two residential units.
So you're giving them kind of the benefit of the doubt in your interpretation, based upon where you are?
Yes, and not to get into Mr. Holmes' territory, but generally, vesting law in Florida, proper, project vesting leans toward the property owner. And when the clock starts ticking, when you start working with the developer, and they submit plans, and so forth and so on, you give them that leniency to say, "We're going to continue to work with them" on that basis.
So that means you didn't create a roadblock, and you gave them the benefit of the doubt, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Consistent with what we've done before.
Okay, okay.
This is a mess, and we're talking with Mr. Crowe right now. I'll give you a chance to respond.
Is there a comprehensive, do you have a comprehensive plan for this entire project?
We do not.
So we're, I guess, so we're checking and adjusting as we go. But, I mean, is that common for projects, for us not to have a comprehensive plan before you allow projects to go on?
I've seen it both ways. I think in difficult economic circumstances, sometimes, I don't want to use the word piecemeal, but essentially, phased projects are typical in planning terms. We see them. Other times, there's kind of a long-range master plan that they work toward. I haven't seen a master plan in this case.
So therefore, of course, we don't have plans. We don't know what, we don't know what foreseeing issues may be there later?
That, yes, generally, we...
And you have been, you have not had the chance to actually review the plans, a comprehensive plan for the project, and say, "This, this, the zoning will allow this. The overlay will allow that. And these are the issues that would come before either the planning board or this commission at some, at some point that you would have to get." So you hadn't had that opportunity?
We've done our best, as the applicant has come in to talk to us, to essentially give them a read on where they stand, based on what they've submitted.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Just for clarification, Ted, Mr. Crowe. It, maybe I got the wrong impression, but it would not be accurate to state that the applicant would have to come before the planning commissioner or anybody else with their particular plans, assuming that they operated within the zoning that's already in place, correct?
That is correct.
They just go to buildings, right?
I'm sorry?
They just go to buildings.
They just go to buildings. That's right. So you're not going to necessarily ever have a, you won't under, not just with this applicant, but any other applicant, as long as they're operating within the scope of whatever zoning they have, with or without conditional uses, then you don't, you don't have the opportunity to review specific plans. They go to the building director, or the building department, and they then build.
And I understand, and the issue that I was getting at, we had had comprehensive, we had some comprehensive plans for the, for this particular project. As they're now requested, then the planning director would have had the opportunity to say, "The zoning either allows for it or doesn't allow for it. And these are the avenues that you would have to go through in order to get the bearings of whatever that you would need in order for, in order for this project to come, to comply." That's where I was getting to.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the Commission?
I want to ask how much are these apartments going to rent for, if it was done?
We're projecting, we hope, to get $2,200 on average for the apartments.
Now, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
And who's the projected market?
Pardon me?
The proposed market that you're trying to reach is whose?
Well, those that are interested in the recent open, well, clearly, let's talk about students. I think that's what we're talking about. But certainly, it would be open and marketable to students. It's a market we've explored, we think, is viable. But in addition, I do need to share this, Commissioner Campbell. The recent open house that we just had with the people. We had inquiries from, I personally had inquiries from two different people, wanting to know if they'd be allowed to rent for someone other than students. So really, I think what we're going to find is we're going to have to build these out and see what that market bears. But that's what we believe, and we believe we'll be successful with that.
Is $2,200 a unit, Mark, do you have to reach in order to achieve economic feasibility with the project?
It's, it's our desired market.
Now, that, but could you answer my question? Is 2,200, I mean, and it's not a facetious or overthought question. When developers develop projects, part of their business plan, at least in my experience, is to look at the revenue they have to generate from a particular project in order for them to meet their debt service and generate whatever maintenance and taxes and insurance and other expenses they're going to have.
$2,200 would certainly meet all of that. Also, also in your experience, I think, someone wanting to market, we hope there may be some potential clients in here. This is not the venue. I would like to tell you the least amount of money we'd accept.
I'm sorry?
I said, "This is not the venue. I'd want to tell you the least amount of money we'd accept." We're trying to market and be successful.
But it helps us to...
It's called commercial enterprise.
...the project.
Right.
And there's two things. When we look at this particular contract, that, that brings concern. And it's probably better served for Mr. Shawbor. I think you had a response to something that you stated earlier. Do you want to respond to that before I ask my questions? So, go ahead. I'll let you move forward before I ask my questions.
I wanted to give something to Mr. Crowe, but he's picked off. Mr. Crowe's here. Mr. Crowe.
And just so we know, we're not turning this into a debate. And so we're just, we can kind of move forward and go from there. If we want to debate, we can do that afterwards. But we won't, we're going to, for the sake of time, we're going to go ahead and just kind of stick to your closing comments.
Yeah. Here's the closing comments. I think the smallest projected unit is 685 feet, and up to 800 feet, I think, are the sizes. So just to address that issue. Zoning does allow for what we're asking for, to specifically respond to you, and that's what Mr. Crowe mentioned as well. An issue came up about parking. And I got to say, the, your ordinance, 94-262, the required number of parking spaces, all districts except for downtown business and downtown riverfront, off-street parking requirements are two spaces for each dwelling unit. But the same statute, and I'm happy to hand, or ordinance, I'm happy to hand you a copy of it. Paragraph B, "For uses in downtown business and downtown riverfront districts, off-street parking requirements are as follows: residential dwellings, one space per dwelling unit." So in point of fact, if you're asking for 19 dwelling units, you're actually required to have 19 minus three is what's actually required. And that kind of makes sense if you're trying to develop a pedestrian-based space like that, and you're trying to encourage people to ride their bikes. And in fact, you actually get a bonus, if you put in a bike rack, you get to take off one of your required parking spots. And this particular development has 35, 35 or 36, 35 spaces, 35 spaces that it privately owns for this, this, this project. The other item that came up and was discussed somewhat at length was, is it four buildings? Is it one building? Well, there are four permits involved. That would make it four buildings. It purchases four buildings. And we will, we will state that the property appraiser incorrectly took action to combine them. But as of now, that is no longer the case. They are separate, it's actually six separate parcels. The four buildings and then the two other parcels, which are addressed further on and further development.
So you separate the parcels?
The parcels are separate parcels, just to keep it very clear that it is separate parcels.
You were given the benefit of the doubt, anyway.
Just to let you know, we backed up and put on some suspenders with our belt. So I think that should address the, the issues that were raised. I'm happy to answer any further questions.
We talked a little bit, you talked a little bit about 27.1 of the contract?
Yes.
You, in 27.1 of the contract, my understanding, as I look at it, is that the Commission has so discretion...
That's right.
...to approve the use and specific development proposed by buyer and depicted within the drawings, diagram, and discretion provided with respect to subsequent development.
Hat in hand.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's basically how we're approaching it.
The other thing is, there's another clause in this contract that talks about feasibility. Would you agree that there was ample time and a clause in this contract under 5.2 where there was a clause specifically that dealt with feasibility and marketing, which gave the buyer an opportunity to determine if it was feasible to purchase the property and develop it for the specific use that they had in place?
I'll agree.
And so there was a marketing analysis, a feasibility study, when this originally came out as the nine condo unit?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as to what the terms of the contract were and where we are. Any other questions for the Commission? Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Mayor, clarifying. The parking requirements in the, I believe, in the actual downtown riverfront zoning segment, there is a different requirement, which requires the two spaces per unit. And there's an overall sweeping provision zoning code that says, "When there is a conflict, the stricter provision prevails." So I stand by my assertion that each unit requires two parking spaces.
Okay. All right, that's fine. With you guys...
That's incorrect.
That's fine. Let's talk about that tomorrow. So, are there any other questions for the Commission?
I was going to ask you, do they have windows? Some of that building at one time didn't have windows in it. Have they...
This is 94, 16.
Window, adequate windows in it? You know, they said they had to have, one of the things they had to have adequate windows.
That had to do with, could I answer?
Yes, sir.
I think that had to do with Mr. Crowe's reference to the main corridor requirement on the northernmost building. And I don't think they've gotten to the point yet where they've had to address that issue.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, but planners admitted that will comply with the windows that the building from that required.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? Any discussion?
I, I had some concerns about parking, but if they have, if they have adequate parking, that's, that's one thing you want to make sure. Because we, the city has bought, bought more property for parking for the city to use. And it should be where we aren't giving up property that we'll need for businesses, we hope, to bring into the area. So you said that you all have enough to have two spaces per apartment.
Hi, um, any other comments?
In that parking, then the parking requirement would be 38 minus three? If you're required to have two per unit?
Your Honor, I, your Honor, Mayor. It's a career, it's a career trajectory for you, sir. Look, I'll, I will invite Mr. Crowe to come and dispute this, but Section 94-161 Downtown Riverfront Districts, which he just referred to, saying it was more restrictive, in point of fact says, "Off-street parking and loading, residential, one space per dwelling unit."
Okay, we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, if it's one space per dwelling unit, it's what's required in both sections.
Is there, is there an anticipation? Is, is there an anticipation of there being 76 occupants in these units overall? Has that been, has that been an anticipation? I mean, it's, it's yes or no, is anticipation. I'm asking you to lock yourself in.
Yeah, it would, we certainly would be welcome. That is not, we don't know. We think there is a market that students will certainly be interested in this.
If you, if you want to do just numbers, the number of bedrooms times two, that's the number you'd come up with.
If we do two people per room, then if we do two people per room, based on number of bedrooms, we're going to look at 76 people possibly in those units.
Yes, 76 people living downtown, using the restaurants, using the commercial spaces. I think that might be good.
I mean, I mean, Mark, hold on, Commissioner Campbell, go ahead.
I mean, I'm probably the one that's closest removed from college living. And the last thing that I want to do is live in a room that's farther away from campus, paying $1,100 per room. I think that's a little bit absurd at the market that you're trying to reach. Now, I don't have a problem with the development of downtown, but I do have a problem with every time, it's something different. Last time, it was an issue that we addressed. I don't think none of us are against the development of that property. However, I am against every time we come, or every time Corky comes, or the development groups come before the Commission, it's something different. Last time, we thought we swept away and got everything ready to roll, and that's what we, that's why we moved forward. I've heard, oh, if it stops. I've heard the promises. I've heard images. I've heard go with the flow. I think we have gone with the flow. Sometimes the flow is not the way that we need to go. At this point, we need to see continuous work. We need to see something happen. And at this point, we, the original thing was, residents up top, commercial down below. Again, if it, if we pass this, is it going to be something in another month? Is it going to be something in another two months? And I don't think that this Commission is something that we want, I don't want that to continuously happen to us. So at this point, we need to make a decision. And again, I stress it, last time, we did not think we would see you again in this short notice with something different. And I think that's a slap in the face to the Commission when we thought, we walked out of this room, we thought, we voted to move forward, that we were ready to really do some work. So again, here we stand, again, with all of these, again. If it stops, promises, images, and go with the flow. Those are all things that we heard tonight. And we heard last time.
And to piggyback off of what Commissioner Campbell says, my, my question is, at what point are you entitled to the benefit of your bargain? You sign a contract on August 1st, 2013, you get that contract amended based upon certain requests that you have in place and noncompliance, particularly with what was in place. And you had an opportunity to do feasibility studies, do market analysis, understanding that you were looking at creating an emerging market, which is a risky endeavor nonetheless. And there has been a bit of skepticism, I think, throughout to see what the end product is going to be. You can't truly say that, and I just happen to have two marketing degrees, but you can't say what the marketing, what the market is going to bear, especially in a situation where you've got a whole bunch of unknown variables and you don't have an end product, which even allows a consumer to be able to make an educated decision on where they're going. But you're trying to create an emerging market, you're trying to also create a market which doesn't bear what the current market has in place, because the current market is almost nonexistent. But you knew that going in, because it's in your contract. And now you find yourself in a position where you're looking to circumvent everything that you negotiated and modified subsequently so that you can do something different. At some point, you've got to, you've got to dig into the dirt and do what you said you were going to do. Because your word is your bond, and once you put it in a contract, the contract is legally binding. And the thing that's most offensive is the intonations that the Commission is acting as though it's a barrier, or the city has been a barrier, where Mr. Crowe has absolutely given some deference. And I understand, it's not, and I'm not directly speaking to you.
Okay.
But there has been this intonation that the Commission is trying to block this project. The Commission, by all means, wants to see this done. But we are not going to find ourselves in a situation where we're going to act out of desperation, because the markets are down. We want to see Mr. Diamond succeed in what he does. But we also want to see this city not find itself in a desperate situation, making decisions that will cause despair later on down the line. We just had, if the, if the equation was to have people downtown, we just had 100 units downtown that were filled, and we decided to demolish. So the issue wasn't having people downtown. Having bodies is one thing. The issue wasn't having people downtown. The issue was how are we going to have controlled growth? And we're going to have planned growth that deals specifically with what the... The issue was how are we gonna have controlled growth, and we're gonna have planned growth that deals specifically with what the needs of the community are. And until we do that, and we continually keep making feel-good decisions because there's a core group of people that think that, oh, woe is me, if this project isn't done in a particular scope. It doesn't happen that way. It still tends to be, you got a contract, you modified the contract. At what point do we stop asking for modifications and deal with what we promised to do? Just give the product that you asked for. The city has skin in the game. Again, that building was appraised at seven hundred thousand. It was sold for one fifty. There was a line of credit that had to be in place that was in all, and pretty much it was just kind of thrown to the side. So there have been concessions made. At what point does Riverfront make a concession? Because you're constantly asking for the city to concede, but I haven't seen the concessions on the other side. And if it's, and if this is a partnership, then it seems like the other partnership be giving and going as opposed to coming and asking. And that's just my thought process.
Well, when one partner has all the power, the other partner has to come and ask. And that's what we're in, in this particular circumstance here.
What we asked last time was every, when you all had the negotiations, and we gave the senior manager and our attorney the okay to sit down and negotiate. We asked, was there any other amendments that you would like to make to this contract? And the answer was no. What prompted this change at this very moment?
I can't personally speak to that. I can, I can surmise that once you started having development happen-
Okay, so you're telling me within two months-
Again, I'm speaking out of my, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of my-
Who needs to answer the question? Because I want to have an answer. If it's something that I'm gonna be voting on.
Well, again, I'd take it back to, to a partnership, and Mr. Mayor, I mean, your points are heard. In many ways, you make the argument. I mean, we're very aware of what the market is here.
The market was that three years ago. The market hasn't changed. It's actually gotten better over the last three years. So if the market is, if we got a market that's strengthening, then, and the dollar is much stronger than it was three years ago, then why are we even having this conversation?
Well, I'd like to think we're having this conversation because the investments that's been put in place that for thirty years, that no one's done anything.
But the project is actually, the building is more valuable, the market is more sustainable. I don't, if the economy is strengthening, which it is, then why are we having the woe is me conversation three years after the economy starts getting stronger?
I would suggest it's not the woe is me. I would suggest this is saying our investment, we believe, is going to be better served for this. And when we, and when we, but when we do talk about what we say, what our comp plan, the thing that guides us, that this does fall under, I fully understand your frustration. This is not-
I'm not frustrated. Where I am is, I am trying to understand, I'm perplexed more than anything, because I'm trying to understand how in a market that's strengthening, especially from a real estate standpoint, that we find ourselves saying that we're in a worse position than we were three years ago as it relates to the feasibility of this particular project, when if anything, the dollar's stronger.
It's not strong enough.
Well, it's stronger than it was when he said he could do it in two thousand thirteen.
Well, I can't deny that we are asking you-
Did he miscalculate?
I think clearly miscalculated. Matter of fact, I think you've heard some of the very local businessmen who agree with that, who are actually emphasizing that today it's a miscalculation. Yet we're here saying we're continuing, no, this isn't a, we're not here saying all or nothing. We're saying a partner. This is a, a better solution and certainly a better investment.
But we heard that last time. It's like, at what point are you gonna stop of wanting us to put our hands to the fire? And you not put your hands to the fire with us and let it stay there? I understand that this is a partnership. We have done absolutely everything that we can. We've met, we've had a happy medium. But at some point, when is it going to stop with the amendments? Like, when is it, when are we gonna say, okay, we've done it, we've done it over, we've done it again, we've done it again, and let's actually move forward?
I hope that whatever contract the city enters into, that they continue to be open, whether it's with Riverfront Development Group or someone else, the end result is better for all.
We see, we've got, we've got a couple of examples.
But that is the question. I mean, certainly you may not think that this end result's better. But I think ultimately, that's the question that we have to ask ourselves.
I think that you are entitled to the benefit of your bargain, and if you say you're gonna do it, then do it. And if you, and that's all I expect you to do is what you say you're gonna do, especially when it's put in a contract. And I think that we've made concessions. I think that we've made attempts to make this work. We've heard that there's been the benefit of the doubt in a whole bunch of ways. And I think where we are is, I am hoping that that August date that was given to me months ago for completion of this project is the date that comes out of it. I'm personally not inclined to put residential on the bottom floor of that building. There's no residential on the bottom floor in those other buildings. And I, I look forward to seeing the commercial in that area. I think that the building is taking shape, and it's looking good, and it's transforming from the eyesore that it was before. I'm encouraged that Mr. Diamond can pull this project off. I don't see this project dying, and I could be wrong, regardless if he has to maintain his position with his initial contract. Can, if the initial contract is what's in place, will this project die?
No, it's not, but I tell you, we'll have to, we'll have to take a look. We'll have to step back. But no, we're a committed partner. I mean, I think we've heard that over and over.
There we have it. Any other questions for the commission?
Yeah, one other question. I guess, when will the planning director receive a detailed site plan?
Absolutely. We really had no hope of keeping out from speaking. We tried.
He really told me not to.
You should listen to your lawyer.
You've said that before. Excuse me.
Do you have an answer, just a direct answer to?
What was the direct question? Tell me the direct question.
I'm gonna try it again.
I've been asking that question for about three years. The answer is they have the plans needed to issue the permit.
No, when will they need, when will the planning director receive a detailed site, receive detailed site plan?
Sure, well, Corky, Diamond, one twenty-four, St. John's Avenue, I'll be quick. They have, and we have four building permits, so just to clarify that. They have full plans and a site plan.
Mr. Crowe?
It's already been, is this a rhetorical question?
Yes.
We were already-
Do you have detailed site plans?
We have construction drawings for the buildings.
That's a yes or no answer.
We have a conceptual site plan with the conditional use application.
So you do not have a detailed site plan?
I would not call it a detailed site plan.
All right. Any other discussion for the commission? You got something else you want to say, Mr. Diamond? I want to make sure I give you a full opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
After, with the advice of your counsel.
Okay, again, thank you. In fact, the matter is a very detailed plan. As a matter of fact, Mr. Sprague had worked with our surveyors, and we have every detail on that plan that's required. So the utilities are there, the buildings are placed, trash is there. I'd have to ask you, what is missing on the detailed site plan? We have everything supplied to it, and it's been accepted, and it's been permitted.
All right, last comment, because we're getting into the debate now.
I think there's some confusion between the construction drawings and the zoning-related site plan. The conditional use application had a site plan that showed the dumpster location and the parking lot. It was not extremely detailed. It was what we call a conceptual plan, which is what we require for those kind of applications.
All right, very well. All right, that's clear. Any other, any other discussion?
I wanna, I say, maybe I shouldn't say that, but you know, I've been sitting up here for quite a few years, and the whole time he said he would like to see businesses downstairs and apartments upstairs. The University of Florida did studies thirty-some years ago stating that. And then I, for years, nobody came forward. We had Mr., the man that owns the, used to be Holiday Inn, he came in and wanted to do stuff, and I just ran him off. Then we had the other gentleman came, and he couldn't finance it. We have people here in town that have come in here tonight and complained, and one apologized because he had not been looking closer at what was going on. We want this town to grow and be what everything it can be. It used to be bigger than Jacksonville. We have people coming here, my grandparents came here because it was an up-and-coming place to be, and we want to put it back where it should be. And I think until all of us start working together and not criticizing too much, but if, give a handout, so we don't have to always give a handup. I mean, don't give a handout, give a handup so that we don't always have to have, have, have that go on with us. We need to be more, work more together. I'm sure that we want to see great things for that downtown. Coffee, I thought when you, we did last time, you wouldn't be back. All I want to do is see that building finished.
We're gonna close it. We'll be here all night. No disrespect to you.
Half and half. Can we do that, just commercial on Main Street?
And no, stop, stop.
Any, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion at this time. Hold on, Commissioner Borman has a-
I'll just say some things. I mean, I mean, again, they, I've heard a number of different things, and I've understood that people didn't come to save this building. We've got seventeen to twenty years of no activity there. Corky has made a significant investment. I think, I think we should give him the benefit of the doubt. I mean, I know it may be untraditional to have things such as that that he's requesting for, just for the modification. It just seemed like they were meeting all the other things as it relates to the codes and other things. I just think that, you know, we have a bird in the hand. It beats a bird in the bush. And, you know, it's untraditional, and I think we need to think about doing things a little bit different. But we don't know what the parking may look like, but we do want foot traffic downtown. We want that traffic. We need foot traffic, we want parking. We want to have a parking problem so that we can solve it. But I think we need to think about it before we shut him out. Just think about it before we shut him out. That's all.
Commissioner Campbell?
We have not done anything traditional to this thus far, and I think we have pretty much put that out there that we are not the traditional commission, and I'd like to make a motion that the contracts stay as is, and we do not amend number two.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Norwood. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. Roll call, please.
Mr. Borman?
No.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion passes three, two. Moving on to item six of the agenda, which is the request for appeal from the planning board. I'd like to let everyone know at this time, we're gonna enter into a public hearing, which is a quasi judicial process. And we are going to go ahead.
She want to know why we're doing this, and we got some other comments, so we need to proceed with this.
So we're gonna enter into a, we're gonna go ahead and open up this hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, would you, would it be permissible for me to perhaps provide a little bit of ground work and perhaps guidelines with regard to what we're about to do?
Can you go ahead and check and see if there's any ex parte communication for her too, or any conflicts?
Has anybody had any ex parte communications, communication with any of the people for or against outside of the hearing that we need to disclose today?
Tom talked to me, but I didn't talk to him.
I didn't see it in mind where you were speaker at the planning board.
Mr. Townsend was in a representative at that particular time, I remember as well. He wasn't, during that particular hearing, he wasn't involved in that process.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, has that any-
I think I've had communication with everybody in the city of Polacka as it pertains to this particular issue. And so we've seen, we've heard a lot of elicited interpretations as to what should be. Any other disclosures of ex parte communication that anyone wants to put on the record?
So, if I could then, just by way of setting the stage, what you have is a appeal, a decision made by the planning commission in denying a request of conditional use. I stress the word appeal. Our code, our ordinance is ninety-four dash three, under subsection seven, basically reads that action taken by the planning board to approve a conditional use with appropriate conditions or safeguards, or to deny a conditional use shall be deemed final unless a request is filed with the city clerk within thirty days. From the date of such planning board decision requesting the city commission to review such decision. It goes on to state that anybody agreed by the decision made by the city commission can then appeal to the courts. My reason for stressing that this is an appeal is by way of saying that you basically sit in two different capacities. One is a legislative body, such as when you hear a zoning recommendation from the planning commission. You're sitting as a legislative body looking to change the zoning ordinance. The planning commission has had a hearing. It makes a recommendation to you. You're not bound to consider only what was heard the planning commission below. You can hear new information at your hearing on the rezoning, and you move forward on that basis. But the other capacity that you sit in is the capacity that you're sitting in now. You're sitting as an appellate body now, meaning that you aren't to be receiving new evidence. You are to be confining yourself to the record below and making a decision essentially about whether or not you find fault with the decision made by the planning commission from the information it received. Obviously, it's hard to find fault with a lower body if you get new information that they didn't have when they made their decision. At least it's hard to legitimately find fault with them. And that's one of the bases for the standard of review on appeal, which is you're to consider the information that they considered, and then basically decide whether or not they made a wrong decision. Now, if I can just briefly, beyond that, I'll mention this. The conditional uses are bound by our zoning statute. And let me read the, the definition first. I've just got a couple of passages for you. I'm not gonna bore you with a lot of information, but the information I'm gonna give you, I believe, is relevant to what you're looking at. Conditional use is defined as follows. A conditional use is a use that would not be appropriate generally or within restriction, or without restriction, excuse me, throughout a zoning district, but which, if controlled as to number, area, location, or relation to the neighborhood, would promote the public health, safety, welfare, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare. So it's a use that's generally not permissible within a zoning category, but if restricted as to certain criteria, might be. That's the definition. So, in the case at issue, they were seeking multifamily residency or permission, which was not permitted by the zoning district, but through conditional use might be. Now, the planning board had some rules that it had to operate on, and those are essentially these, and they're found also in ninety-four, three. Before any conditional use shall be approved, the planning board shall make a written finding that the granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest, and certifying that the specific requirements governing the individual conditional use, if any, have been met by the petitioner, and that further satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made concerning the following matters where applicable. And then there are A through K, specific matters that the board, the planning board should have to basically find, had been addressed in an appropriate fashion. Those included subsection C, off-street parking and loading areas where required with particular attention of the items mentioned elsewhere. And then there were, there were other, general compatibility, which is I, subsection I, general compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district. Then there were others. So that was the planning board, that's what the planning board, the marching orders, so to speak, they were given. And then, also in the same ordinance, under subsection six, it stated, if the planning board shall deny a conditional use, it shall state fully in the record its reasons for doing so. Such reasons shall take into account the standards stated in subsection four, which are some of those that I just stated, i.e. are some of those that I just stated, i.e. off-street parking and general compatibility. In the instant case, the planning board, and I'll paraphrase, and you can look at the staff report, but they, they voted, uh, seven to one, six-one, what was it? Seven to one? Seven to one to deny. And my recollection is, and that the motion stated the, the bases were compatibility and parking. So, that's the record that you've got below, and that's, uh, that's where you are now in terms of reviewing their decision.
Are there any, are there any questions as to the procedure at this point? Mr. Sharborough, are you any questions?
Yes, I do, actually. I would, um, I would actually push, uh, for a little bit more leeway in the quasi judicial hearing, and I, I'd like to raise for the record a case called Taxi USA of Palm Beach. I'll give this to, uh, the attorney, uh, to you, Mr. Mayor. It's a fourth district court of appeal case in two thousand fourteen. The number's four, D one-four hyphen two-three-nine-seven. Just basically. And I'm citing to this case just for the proposition that the standard of review is not as restrictive and a quasi judicial body as it would be safe for an appellate court issue.
It'd have been helpful if you could have provided this in advance so they could have a chance to discuss it. Just a note for the record.
Very well. Uh, I'm, I'm just gonna refer to page four very briefly. Although counsel sits as an appeal board, the term appeal can encompass a de novo hearing in other administrative contexts, such that the term appeal means a mere application to a higher authority. And further down the final paragraph on that page, whether called a hybrid appeal or quasi judicial procedure, the city code does not contemplate a conventional or strict appellate standard when a challenge to the hearing officer's determination is sought in the city council. And so, based on the statute, the ordinance that was read, just basically says anybody can ask for an appeal to review. I don't want, uh, those who have a legal education to think that this is appellate review standard.
So you're, so you're requesting a quasi trial de novo?
Well, I'm saying that there is flexibility here. It's not strictly, we have to review what the lower court decided, and unless we, if we can't find an error, uh, then we have to affirm it. You, you are the city, you are the elected officials. You are the individuals responsible to the citizens who voted for you. You appointed people to this board, the planning board. Yes, it serves a very valuable function to review applications and make recommendations to this board, but this board is the authority, and I would argue that, um, they, that it's, as I said, it's not, you don't, you don't have to find, uh, that there's, you know, some bases for error on their part. You can choose to make a different determination.
But instead of a review, discretion here? But, I'll just note, and I haven't had a chance to read this entire opinion, which is actually, I believe, on a petition for writ of certiorari, which raised some other issues, but it, it appears as though the ordinance that the city was working with, that the court was working with in this case was, provided something that the court's determining or calling a hybrid appeal, where it wasn't specified within the code that, that the board was sitting in a strictly appellate capacity, but again, which is different from our code, but again, without looking at it in depth, I don't want to offer an opinion.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll get, we can up to review it.
City gave the developer the sentence based upon this presentation. He cites to the testimony of Mr. Bates. Then he says, that's the most pertinent thing that's been said here today. Who knows, who, who knows who's going to rent these buildings? It's high-density, low-end housing. You heard that refrain again. Concerned that some out-of-town subsequent owner isn't going to care what happens in downtown Palatka. He, he stated that he initially supported demolition. He also said that, you know, hey, but if somebody can do something, I'll for it. And then he also raised the concern about parking. It was in a conversation with Mr. Crowe, why the city looks at the project as four separate parcels, and as you heard tonight, it's a matter of vesting of those rights. Mr. Martinez then came up and spoke. Mentioned that he's raised in Palatka. He's in full agreement with Mr. Bates and Mr. Turner. Original plan was eight condos, concerned about transient residents. They have no interest in Putnam County or the city of Palatka. So some future potential residents are his concerns. Mr. Beck then spoke. One of the largest taxpayers in the city of Palatka, having multiple dealerships and quite a bit of commercial ground. I want to echo what Ben Bates has said. I supported demolition in the beginning, and the idea was presented and approved. Now it's possibly changing, and I think it's totally to the detriment of the city. And I'm really strive to present a, a balanced presentation of the issues that were raised by the individuals who spoke, and not go and cherry pick specific statements or anything like that. And, and I think if you follow the transcript, you'll, you'll find that, that that's true. Mr. McLean then spoke. He's disappointed in the hotel. He's excited with the developer's original idea, but see that it is changing. I ask you not to approve this. And then he said, and to repeat somebody that something is better than nothing, this is not better than nothing. That's a pretty strong opinion, and he's entitled to it. Finally, Mr. Woodward's allowed to respond. The developer shares the disappointment, but adjustments are necessary. People will bring life to downtown. I think some people are still fighting for the idea of tearing down those buildings. And he mentioned that a lot of the discussion was outside the scope of what the board should be focused on. Bottom line, does the conditional use request meet the criteria? Then, Mr. Spalding was allowed to come up and give public comments, and he says, they're asking for seventy-six people in the complex total. Anyway, I have a long history of Palatka. My father had an office at one oh nine North Second Street, made a very distant living out of that building. It needs to remain commercial. It hasn't been commercial in quite some time, I, I have to state, just because, I mean, it's been zoned that way, but it hasn't had any commerce. I do honor and respect what Mr. Bates, again, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Turner said, and he asked the board to deny. Uh, Mr. Holmes said, he was of the opinion that the first-floor residential issue was a proper issue for the planning board to consider. And then the planning board started some discussion. Prelude to a motion is how I've titled this slide. So, they start talking about first-floor residential issue, some, the parking comments, and difficulty of renting the units, those kind of things. Eventually, Mr. Deloach, Mr. Deloach says, I am totally one hundred percent against it. Mr. Harwell then states, I'm not so, so much against the, the increasing the units, but I am against the quality, and I don't think there's any way we can get the quality. Mr. Kilibrue states, businesses have left because of parking. Right. Mr. Holmes then gives instructions regarding denying or approving the permit. And I want to, I, I, I find it relevant, maybe, maybe it is. That is the order that he started speaking. He said, I need you to understand, if you move to deny, well, first of all, if you decide to approve, that's all you need to do is approve. But if you move to deny, then it can't be because you think it should be high-end condos. The denial must be based on issues of compatibility, parking, not consistent with public interest, et cetera. Trying to clearly lay out for the board what their task was. Mr. Sheffield, the chairman of that board, followed up and also instructed the board, when a motion is made, please be specific on what the, if it is against the approval, that you state the reasons, that it's because of a conditional use criteria, not because of emotion. Mr. Deloach then said, I make a motion that we deny this. We are overcrowding an area that's already crowded. Like I said, I was a downtown merchant for thirty-three years, and I know what it's like, and I know what people do. The off-street parking that we had, everything about it just makes me, I just think changes need to be made, and I make a motion we deny. To which the chair said, and your motion is based on what? And Mr. Deloach in response said, well, it's not to add more condos or not condos, or whatever you want to call them, apartments or whatever. We're trying to add those downtown. You put those in to make this project work. You're just, you're overcrowding an already crowded area, and I don't think that was what was in the intent when we first, when we first started all of this out. Mr. Sheffield, recognizing that this was a problematic form of a motion, asked Mr. Crowe, the planning staff, who has recommended approval of the permit with conditions, for help forming an appropriate motion for its denial. At that point, Mr. Crowe got up and said, if I may, conditional uses are defined as uses that should be controlled as to their number and frequency. I think that you can make an argument, I think you could make an argument in this case, and I'll ask Mr. Holmes what he thinks about this. Essentially, that the frequency is too high, there's potentially too many of these units in one area, and you know that it kind of drowns out something and overwhelms that particular block. I think that would probably be an acceptable argument, based on what I'm hearing. Mr. Holmes said, and the parking would be, I guess, ancillary to that or a part of that. It's indiscernible in the transcript. To which Mr. Sheffield said, Mr. Deloach, does that fit? Mr. Deloach says, that works, because at this point, we're just looking for something that could possibly pass muster here for a decision that's not really been predicated upon a criteria. Mr. Sheffield then tries to clarify the motion. Okay, so we have a motion to deny based on the frequency or the number of units as you, he's interrupted by Ms. Williams and I second, and Kilibrue I second. Now, I want you to understand that the minutes of the meeting, here's how it reflects what the motion was. The minutes of the meeting state, the motion to deny asks, Mr. Deloach moved to deny the request based upon the conditional use definition pertaining to the number and frequency of uses. In this case, that being a too-high concentration of units in one small area, which overwhelms this block, noting that the project were overcrowded, an already overcrowded area, and off-street parking supply would be negatively impacted. So, that's what came out as what the minutes reflected the motion to be, and I can understand the challenge to the person putting together the minutes. Please recall, please recall, the applicant met the parking requirements even when the incorrect figure was used. A figure that was almost double the amount actually required by the zoning regulations. And yet, we have a denial based on negative impact to parking. Seven Bates was improperly bolstered, was a witness. The board member was unable to articulate a viable motion to deny, and instead, the motion was crafted by staff and counsel to state an arguably credible basis. The term frequency is not a part of any of the relevant criteria. It is part of the definition of conditional use. Density, which I believe is what people were trying to reach for, and I'll make that assumption, is fully addressed by the comp plan and section ninety-four, one sixty-one, which is the zoning for the downtown riverfront zoning. And this project is well within those requirements. Our request was for nineteen minutes, including four, on the first floor. As I amended that request at the beginning of this presentation, we would ask for this board to override the planning board and to grant the conditional use permit, which is for the fifteen units, with a maximum allowed of eighteen, because the developer has met all the criteria.
Sharborough, do you have any additional evidence or witnesses that you want to put on at this time?
Unless Mr. Crowe wants to come and speak to the fact that I spoke with him and he agrees that there was a misreading on his part of the parking requirements.
Are you calling, Mr. Crowe?
Sure.
Mr. Sharborough, you're a witness.
Mr. Crowe? Could you please tell the board what the parking requirements are for the downtown riverfront district?
Parking requirements are one space per unit.
Thank you. Any further questions, counsel?
No.
Appreciate it. Anything else? You're fine, if you don't have anything else. Don't feel from bad, but I just want to make sure you present everything. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah. There's a whole lot I could say. I'll, I'll limit myself to the standard again. Uh, I, I believe that the standard of review is, uh, one of, you're determining whether or not the record, from the record, you can make a finding that, uh, the planning board erred in its decision. I don't think that appellate review amounts to yours trying to determine whether or not you would have done the same thing as the planning board, whether you would have interpreted the testimony differently. I think it, it basically boils down to your deciding whether or not, with the record that was established, uh, they could or did rely on factors and evidence and apply, applying those to the criteria and, and coming up with a decision stated differently, whether you think there's nothing in the records for what they did. So, uh, I think that's appellate review. I think if you start reweighing the evidence and deciding you would look at it differently, then you're basically putting yourself in their position and essentially looking at what they looked at for deciding whether you would have done the same thing, and I don't think that's the standard of appellate review. Beyond that, I won't make any comment.
If we were in a court of law, and there was a decision, a judgment, a final judgment made by a judge, that's a determination been made and an appeal is then taken. You have a planning board to review and recommend. They are not making a final decision. And in fact, by your very ordinance, it said their opinion is final unless a party seeks review of this body. Therefore, I would say that the stringent standard of appellate review reserved to our judiciary is not applicable to a quasi judicial determination of an elected board that uses appointed members to a body that makes recommendations.
I'm really not gonna debate it with Mr. Sharborough. He says, I categorically disagree with his statement that the planning commission's decision in this case is a recommendation. I think he just said that. It's not a recommendation. If it were a recommendation, then it would require final action by you in order for there to be a final order, and there is not. In fact, the code specifically states that the action of the planning board is final unless it's appealed. Well, technically, the, the decision by a circuit court is final unless it's appealed to. It's not a recommendation to an appellate court. It's a final decision unless somebody appeals it, and that's the capacity that you've got here. And if, and if that's wrong, if our code's inaccurate, then fine. Another court can tell us, but that's what my advice to you is, this is an appeal. If we're gonna start looking at it as a recommendation like we would, a rezoning recommendation from the planning commission, then you're totally changing the context of your ordinance.
And that comes with ratification, right? And then that has to be ratified based upon what would be in place, but we don't have that process with, with our ordinance.
Not in my opinion.
Well, we've heard, we've heard the evidence presented by the appellant in this particular situation. Uh, we've, has everyone had an opportunity to review the evidence, uh, that was presented during the planning board's meeting? At this point, is there any discussion?
I guess my first question would be, you know, I, I see the recommendations that here, the commission can even confirm, modify, reverse the planning board's decision, to deny this conditional use, more specifically, the commission can- The United Is Conditional Use, more specifically, the commission can even support the denial or reverse the denial, support staff, staff recommendation to allow for no more than sixteen upper-floor units, no first-floor units, along with other staff with the conditions. Or reverse the denial, supporting the applicant, and allowing for fifteen upper-floor units and full first-floor units, along with the other staff condition. Or reverse the denial and modify approved conditions to include fewer units and/or other conditions. And I guess my question is, too, does, if, if this commission find that the decision was made, was not made based on the criteria set forth, could it also reverse, reverse it and send it back to the planning board?
If you're asking me?
Yes.
In my opinion, yes. I'm not sure, this is staff's recommendation, not mine, what you're reading from your staff report. I'm not sure that, I'm comfortable with the concept that you can reverse the planning commission and then, and then make your own decision. You know, make a decision that's different than the one they made. I'm not sure how that, how that really comports with my idea of an appeal. Reverse and remand for them to reconsider based upon your determination that they didn't rely upon the relevant factors. I could understand that as being an option. But reverse and then create your own approval that isn't, well, your own approval that's different from the one that was applied for? In other words, that there was an application made, it was denied, the denial was appealed, and then you reverse the denial, don't grant what was applied for, but do something in the middle? I have a hard time with that.
If we send it back to the planning board, wouldn't that slow whatever process that the builder is doing in getting his project finished?
I don't think that should be the criteria that you worry about. Think you have to worry about the process, the appellate process, the, if you find the process was flawed and you want to, and you want to do something with it, then, I don't know, from my perspective, I'm having a hard time understanding how you can do anything other than, if you're going to reverse it and say they were wrong, then I have a hard time understanding how you do anything other than give them what they asked for to start with. Because that's what, it was up or down from the planning, from the, from the planning commission's perspective. I don't know how you go to a recommendation from staff. Staff isn't a body that makes those decisions. They do make recommendations. So, from my perspective, I don't know, I haven't, I'm having a hard time understanding how you do anything other than uphold it, remand it, or grant the appeal, which would mean validating the, the original request.
If I may, your conditional use ordinance ninety-four-three, under appeals, it says, "Any person," this is after an appeal has been requested from this body, goes on to say, "Any person aggrieved by an action of the city commission affirming, modifying, or reversing such planning board decision may seek recourse to the courts, as provided by the laws of the state." So, your ordinance very specifically says you could approve, you could reverse, and you can modify. And so, I'd say that solves the riddle.
I don't think it does. What the ordinance says is that if the planning, if the city commission modifies it, and someone feels they've been aggrieved by the modification, they can appeal to circuit court.
That presupposes?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't presuppose that they can modify it legitimately. It presupposes that they can modify it and that somebody's aggrieved by it. You find me in here where it specifically states, and you made a statement, you said your ordinance specifically states the planning, the city commission has the ability to modify on appeal. Show it to me. Show it to me somewhere other than where it says that a person aggrieved by the commission's action in modifying the decision cannot appeal to the circuit court. Show it to me.
I stand by my interpretation of the language. It says that the, a person can seek court action if they're aggrieved by affirming, modifying, or reversing.
Exactly. I saw that.
And, and to resolve the issue, grant the request as it's presented. You still have the contractual restriction that does not allow for the developer to build on the first floor. Grant it directly as it was presented. It's still restricted from the first floor.
He met the criteria.
Right. He met all the criteria.
Any comments, concerns, questions from the commission at this point, any further discussion? Seeing none in their motion. Commissioner Norwood, who's about to say something?
Go ahead.
That's a boss.
That is a boss.
He beat me by a metal shaft.
Come here. Based on, based on the evidence, and on the criteria that was used for the motion, I move that we reverse the planning board's decision and remand it back to the planning board.
I don't think that's an option. I'm sorry.
I didn't say you couldn't do that. Mr. Sharborough said you couldn't do that.
Is there a second? Seeing none, well, is there?
I have a question, I want to.
There's a motion. If there's no second, motion odds for lack of second. Any further discussion?
Okay.
I was, I was trying to figure out what we could do. I see that, I feel that some of the criteria was not looked at, and I, and I would like to, we don't have, we, y'all can't put anything on the first floor anymore, because we just did that. But I, I wouldn't want to see more than fifteen apartments go in there, not up to eighteen, just to that number.
Where, where we are is this, we're the city, we're the commission, who ultimately has to make the decision. Let's not pass the buck back to anybody else. Let's make the decision tonight. And let's make that decision, and based upon the evidence presented, based upon what's been reviewed and presented in the prior hearing, there's been no new addition, there's been no new evidence presented. So, there has to be a determination as to whether the denial was proper or whether the denial wasn't. There's a, and so, again, that's where we are. And so, I want there to be a clear record as to, that the motion is made based upon the evidence that's been presented. And not based upon any new evidence that wasn't presented to the planning board.
All right, well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion based on the evidence that we heard tonight, that we reverse, we reverse the denial, support, supporting staff recommendation to allow for no more than sixteen upper-floor units, no first-floor units along the, with the other staff conditions. That's my recommendation.
I'll sit.
Smush nine floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion?
Question.
Questions call. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Motion passed, it's three to two.
Thank you.
Mr. Diamond and, y'all, y'all get it, listen, don't come back.
Pass to ground floor. But not as the number of units for top floor.
Can you, excuse me, we're still, we're still in the meeting right now. Item number seven on the gender city manager and administrative reports. Mr. Crowe, do you have anything? I'll get back to you. Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Griffin? No, we good. Chief? Sir Reynolds?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Griggers?
No, sir.
Seal?
Yes, sir, I want to take a minute to supplement this to give some advanced information about a project that's going to start.
Very quickly, out at the airport, it involves removing trees. Five acres on the southwest side of the airport, that's on airport property that can be removed. It's a project with us, FDOT, and FAA. And we're going to have a pre-bid meeting on the eighth of June, and we hope to have that project bided out and awarded by the end of June. So, it's going to, it's going to start pretty quick. And there are, there are some trees on the east side of the airport. About ten trees or so on about five parcels of property that belong to private individuals. We have a letter prepared to send to these people. These trees are violating a, an airspace and a safety zone. So, they could someday get contentious. But anyway, just want to let everybody know. We're going to bid, the advertisement for the bid went out yesterday, or day before, and that project is going to come real quick.
Appreciate it. Chief member? Sir Reynolds?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Griggers? Suggs?
Can I say nothing, sir?
You can, you can say it tonight.
I can say tonight? Just, just, just to let you know, we followed up on your request when we wrote it, wrote it for ATS. We'll get the review on there some week before we mail it out. Just, that was a request of the last commission, just wanted to speak on that. So, but just that we don't never respond, or I shouldn't say never, with the history, or the practice of not responding, but public comment. It's my, I would like, for the record, to reflect that the four-hundred thousand dollars that it was said that the city was going to be spending on the Brownfield grant, that is not city dollars, those are grant dollars.
Strong? Commissioner Norwood?
Well, we had a good weekend.
And we end on a good note.
For cleanup, I thought it went very well, and, and let me take this time, you know, to thank the mayor for taking that, you know, for starting that initiative about the cleanup, and he had some really mushroomed, dropped up in county. And has, and has really caught on, and, and I think the county overall was, is ready for calls. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Norwood?
No further comment.
Commissioner Norwood?
Again?
Don't give him another chance. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Brown. Vice Mayor Brown.
I'm a little short, I say that. I would like to say, I thought we had a good weekend, too. And I have, two years ago, I brought back some information on how to recruit businesses to your area. I passed it on to our city manager at that time, and he didn't do anything about it. I brought another copy to our new city manager. I would like to have the attorney talk to those, Mr. Diamond and those, and have them come and look at that proj, that project. If it's one that we can do and recruit, I know it might cost something, but if we brought the chamber, the county, the city, and private industry into it, we might be able to recruit more businesses for our downtown. So, if you all would do that, and if the commissioner mind them going in and talking to Mr. Suggs to see if it's something that we can do to, to start that ball rolling. I would like to say, if anybody wants to know what Brown feels to do, look at our gas authority. They dug up all that property, put it back, and made it where people can live without getting sick and having disease. I have been on two or three trips for the city and brought back the information that I'm sharing with the rest of y'all. I want y'all to know it. If you want some more information, call me.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just real briefly, internship program proposed structure has been submitted. We are currently just vetting out some of the details. Just wanted to put that on the record that we are working towards.
Okay. It was a great weekend last week with the cleanup. We had over ninety-two hundred pounds of trash picked up throughout the county. We're estimating roughly six hundred volunteers that we had in place. It's Blue Crab Weekend, and it's past nine o'clock in Alabama, we're adjourned.